Good evening. The work session of the ISD 279 School Board is being held in the Forum Room of the Educational Service Center at 11-293rd Avenue North in Maple Grove on Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session has ended. The intent of the school board work session is to allow for school board discussion of topics. Work sessions do not include an opportunity for audience members to address the board. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their names, starting to my left.
Thomas Brooks, school board member.
Jackie Muscina-Jones, school board member.
Heather Douglas, school board member.
Kelly Parpart, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools.
Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Steve Phelisck, Assistant Superintendent for the Elementary Schools.
Gotham Barani, Student School Board Representative.
Nina Beatty, Student School Board Representative.
Izzy Andor, Student School Board Representative.
Amy Tolleson, District Level Principal.
Rapid Consolus, Director of Learning and Achievement.
Julie Johnkay Rice, Coordinator of Data and Assessment.
Tom Watkins, Coordinator of Data and Assessment.
Kay Velella, Executive Director of Community Relations.
Brian Severson Hall, Executive Director of Community Engagement.
John Morsette, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Amy Moore, General Counsel.
Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Achievement.
Naitanya Prince, School Board Member and Present. The purpose of the school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at all regular board meetings. Dr. Hale is not in attendance this evening as she is chaperoning with the students connecting through International Service, which is an amazing program that we get to hear about regularly. Dr. Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement, will facilitate our work session. Dr. Bass?
Thank you. Vice Chair Prince, members of the board. Our first presentation this evening, as you see on the monitors, is our Vision Card for Strategic Direction C. I want to thank our team from Learning and Achievement, Data and Assessment. So this evening, we have direct -- oh, they just introduced themselves. Robin, Jenna, and Tom, who are here this evening. And we also have our school board reps who have been prepped. Thank you to our district level principal, Amy Tolleson, and they are prepared to join us in our conversation this evening in reviewing the data from our Vision Card C. I do have a little bit of some context setting for the presentation, and I'll hand it over to the team. So as a reminder, this year, we have shifted from baseline data to comparison data. So this is our second year of populating vision cards. Our baseline data established our current reality for the district last year. Tonight, we show our progress toward realizing the vision for our district by comparing the early data. This data will show that while we still have a lot of work in front of us, we observe some signs of progress. That's encouraging. So to set the stage for tonight's presentation, I want to briefly review the definition and the mindful critical questions that guide or inform the data we will be presenting this evening. So Strategic Direction C states, "Promote inclusive participation of all our communities and provide timely, relevant, and easily accessible communication." The definition statement, "Members within the community find themselves represented and reflected through each communication method. We understand that meaningful participation fosters positive academic and equitable outcomes and communicates respect and maintain dignity, affirming each member of our teaching, learning, and the broader community." Our mindful critical questions, "How have we provided multiple pathways for families or community members to engage in communication? What practices have we established to ensure that communication is accessed universally?" And lastly, "What feedback loops have we created to ensure our communication is making intended connections?" I want to also acknowledge that Kay Velella will also be presenting a bit in this presentation as well, Executive Director of Community Relations. So I just want to acknowledge that as well. And then each vision card provides us with an opportunity for increased transparency in reporting our progress, the impact of our initiatives on each strategic direction. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to the team. Thank you.
So as Dr. Bass spoke, we are -- tonight, we're going to make sure that you receive information or receive data for the high priority initiatives for Strategic Direction C and understand the alignment of the operational plan to the vision card data collection. We, as a district, have decided that vision cards will serve as a critical data point -- or will serve as critical data point toward the realization of the desired daily experience for our scholars, staff, and family. The vision cards measure the district's success in achieving the strategic directions, and they provide the data to support and assess progress toward the narrative vision outlined in the strategic roadmap. Vision cards set the ongoing district goals for performance and continuous improvement. On this slide, you can see the learning and implementation work for Strategic Direction C that's on the district through your operational plan. We're going to be talking about four different indicators tonight. C1, which is family and community engagement. C2, school-to-family communication. C3, family-to-school communication. And the fourth is perception of inclusive communication families. As I start -- as we start each of these presentations, the vision card presentations, we really focus on the data that we're presenting tonight. And the data is going to be satellite data, it's that really high-level data that we can't really use to make programming changes, but it does indicate patterns across our system that we can dig deeper in to find that map and street data that we can use to identify where causes. So as you're hearing this very high-level data, we also share the information with sites so that they can look at their site-level data and then do it even more. And I will turn this over to Jenna. Thank you.
So our first indicator in Vision Card C includes six process metrics that measure various aspects of family and community engagement. First metric is the percentage of sites having representation on one or more of our district advisory committees. And the committees included are linked in the vision card. Overall, 97% of our sites were represented on at least one community. This is an exciting result as it moves us this metric into that vision category and was a 10% increase overall from the representation that we had last year. And this is important as district committees are one way for our families to have their voices heard and to co-create initiatives and engage in problem-solving with district staff. And then, for the first time, we're also reporting on the results of the Family Engagement Rubric, which was designed by our family engagement team led by Vanessa Gill. The rubric consists of four areas on which site staff focus when engaging with families. In December of this year, site leaders were asked to rate their sites in terms of where they are at in the implementation of each of these areas to set our baseline. The rubric, also linked in the vision card, has a rating scale of 1 to 3, with 1 meaning emerging, 2 meaning progressing, and 3 meaning excelling. The ratings in each area were averaged, and those average ratings are what we see here in the vision card. Effective Communication rose to the top with a mean rating of 2.3, followed by Climate and Culture at 2.1, and tied at 1.9, our intentional collaboration and inclusive practices and empowerment and advocacy. I'll pass it to Tom to talk about some of the metrics.
School of Family Communication is measured using data from Talking Points and our Black Board, Family Communication Systems, and also through the Morris Leatherman Community Survey. For School of Family Communication, we selected Talking Points and Black Board because they both are used across our system. One thing to keep in mind is there's not a requirement or an expectation that sites use Talking Points to communicate. With Talking Points, staff can send a message or announcement to family members in English, and it's automatically translated into the family's home language. When family members reply, that's also automatically translated back into English. And for these measures, we're reporting the number of messages and announcements sent by staff to families using Talking Points during the first trimester of each of the last three school years. And these are the first three years in which the platform is used. Messages and announcements both increased to more than three times as much from the fall of 2020 to fall of 21, returned to baseline levels in the fall of 22, and increased again in fall of 23. In the first trimester of this school year, the following schools sent three or more Talking Points messages per student to families, which is at or above the vision level for this measure. OCU Education Center, Crestview, Birch Grove, Palmer Lake, Edinbrook, Garden City, Zanewood, Pharaohs, 279 Online Elementary, Fernbrook, Brooklyn Middle, 279 Online, and OCU Area Learning Center. And our second measure is our Black Board data from the first trimester of the current school year for fall of 2023. Black Board is used at the district and school level to communicate with families via phone calls, email messages, and text messages. The measure is the overall percent of Black Board messages that were delivered. And after this report was sent to you, we received word from the vendor that there were some technical issues preventing us from getting accurate data on this indicator, and so we'll get the corrected data to you once it's available. Our third measure is the Morris Leatherman Community Survey, and this survey's been conducted with a random sample of community members for several years. The specific data we'll use from the survey is the percentage of community members responding excellent or good to the following question. Overall, how would you rate the job the school district does in communicating with residents? Excellent, good, only fair, or poor? This percentage was at 84% in 2023. This -- the slide you saw in between is the one that has the Black Board data that's going to have to get updated, so we're not going to really report on that tonight. And then for C3, Family-to-School Communication includes two measures. The first measure is Talking Points messages sent from family members to staff during the first trimester of each school year. Like the School-to-Family measures described above, the measure is the number of messages sent per student. Family messages to staff increased each of the past three years. The following schools have family message rates at or above the vision level. Birch Grove, Crestview, OCU Education Center, Edinbrook, Palmer Lake, Garden City, Fernbrook, Zanewood, Pharaohs, Woodland, Brooklyn Middle School, 279 Online Elementary, and Rice Lake. The second measure is the percent of parents using ParentView. ParentView allows parents to check attendance, course grades, health records, high school credits, test scores, and other data. The Information Systems Department began reporting ParentView-used data in January of 2023. Records for February were used for this report. The baseline level for this indicator was 86%, and it increased to 88% in February in this year. And I will pass it back to Jen.
Well, on this slide, you can see the survey results for the 21-22 school year, and that is because that survey's conducted every other year, and the administration of the survey is currently in progress, and so we will have results from that survey by June. So that's a very brief presentation on Vision Card C. So one of the things is our next steps as we're moving forward is really to continue to get past that satellite data into the everyday practices, that map data and street data that we're talking about, which is why we have our students here today, to kind of share their perceptions of this vision card and how they have felt of the communication in our system. So as we go through, just as I said before earlier, that we were going to continue to share this information with sites so that they have this information and can make decisions at their site based on this information. Okay. Add some --
Yeah, I was going to add a little context to this as well. So as many of you are aware, we have a district-wide communication plan as well in which we dig even a little bit deeper. We have lots of goals and objectives on there for all of our core audiences that we're focusing on, our families, our students, and our parents, our greater community, and our staff as well. So some of the ways that we're digging even a little deeper in that realm is we're focusing on, so for our digital communications, like what are people clicking on, what are they reading, so we can kind of get a little bit more on that content side of things, so that we're reaching people on what they want to know about, right, and what they're most concerned about. We're also bringing communication plans to the school level as well. So right now, our community relations team is meeting with every school to talk about just what they're doing at their sites. We started that conversation a little bit about a year ago, but now we're just getting on paper, like what are their goals specifically communication-wise, right? What are they doing? Are there ways that our community relations team can help out so they really have a plan moving forward that they can take a look at and adjust as needed to with what their family needs are and their families' and their community needs too? And as part of that, we've partnered at length with like our multilingual team. There's so many different tools that we have for communications right now. Think of all the different ways we can text, and we can email, so there's a lot of variety out there. So we're bringing some consistency into what tool people are going to utilize. So we were specific in when and how to use our math notification or our Black Board system, as well as Talking Points. We've now added it as a requirement. Now, all sites haven't been met with yet, so just keep that in mind. So it's going to take a little bit of time for implementation, but we're asking that all of our classrooms utilize Talking Points as well moving forward. So there is some consistency that will be coming. We're about a quarter of the way through with meeting our sites, so there's still a few months before we're able to connect and reach with everybody, but I'm confident that we'll see even some more progress on our vision card as we move forward here. And we're really, in partnering with our multilingual team, like we really wanted to make sure, like, we're making every effort to reach families, especially for the top languages that we can service here in our school district, that they're receiving simultaneous and accurate communication. So that is a lot of what we're sharing with our schools in hopes for the future. We've had some additional success just over these last few months as well in hearing from our schools a little bit more. When we first started this conversation, there was definitely a desire to have e-newsletters, and a lot of them were using a smart e-newsletter, but not all, so we brought that, and our community relations team is taking that on, created templates for all of our sites, and they're all utilizing that now. So that was a really great partnership that I think is forward-moving, and additional ways that people can get information in different languages as well. We're seeing an increase. We know from our data that website and email are like some of our top communication vehicles with our families, and that's the way that they're willing to get a lot of our information. So we also pushed for an increase in our website, making sure that that's timely and relevant for everybody. So we're seeing an increase in requests, which is good progress. And we're also seeing some increase in usage with social media in regards to Facebook specifically. So some of the things, when we have our conversations with schools, and just making sure that we're communicating early, openly, and honestly, and in multiple different ways, that we're having two-way communication when possible, making sure we're really listening, making sure that everyone is aware that, you know, that in-person communication is always the best, always putting ourselves in our audience's shoes, and just making sure to have that good customer service. So these are just some of the ways that we're trying to additionally make progress with, specifically with this vision card.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from the board student representatives, or the board members, or others?
So two questions, actually. One question going back to the beginning on the advisory committee engagement. And I'm sure you probably knew this question was coming, but that's a pretty high percentage of representation across the district, and just wondering what the breakdown is and how can we, going forward, get better information that speaks to parent representation or scholar representation?
Yeah, so I agree, it's a high percentage. And what the percentage is telling us is the percentage of sites that are represented on a committee. So like if we have a parent or family member from each of our sites on at least one of those committees. And so a positive thing was that we saw a large increase in representation. We have approximately the same number of parents participating on committees, but they're more well-distributed, I think, through the district.
So that number does include staff, or does not?
It includes staff, except for principals who are required to be there. They're mostly family members. Yes.
Mostly family, okay. All right, thank you. And then, second question, Kay. You talked about the district comms plan and some of the site comms plan, and just wondering how we are integrating language into that?
Yeah, that's definitely a key piece. So we want to make sure that all of our communications have some sort of language component to it. So for our -- we were trying to make it a little bit easier, so that was the great thing about our partnership with the multilingual team. So when we're meeting with schools right now, we're requiring that we have like our language line information in all of our emails that go out, and that everyone is utilizing the translators that we have in-house here for their top languages, and we're notifying if they weren't already aware of what those top languages are. And then definitely reiterating that our classrooms -- and I would say in some schools, Talking Points has taken off quite a bit, and some not as much. So we're just -- this is the first time that we're requiring that classrooms use it as well, so that's an additional way that communication can go out in language as well. And the nice thing with our translators in-house is that we can, like, even with like our math notification system, which we've utilized in this fashion before, like, we have our translators record something in an audio format and send it that way as well. We can send texts, we're just limited on the amount of characters, but we can send people to a different, like, a website that might be translated, right? So everything that goes out should have some sort of translation component to it. It's just going to take some time for that to be implemented across the system. That's something that we're definitely aware of, that we need to make some further progress on, and we're working toward that.
Thank you.
I had a question about the Talking Points data for 2021. It's a -- it looks like an anomaly, significantly higher than the other. I was wondering if that was a typo, or if that was actually--
It's really pandemic effect.
That's what I was wondering about.
It was just a pinch point where that was absolutely needed. Yeah, I don't remember that period of, you know, just the amount of weight that landed on our local translators and, you know, I remember being with them at that time, it was just absolutely crazy. So I think that reflects that, the fact that they were just unmet, and it was there.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, if I'm remembering correctly, the smart newsletter can be translated, there's buttons to translate that.
Yeah, so that is a new translation that we drafted that wasn't there before necessarily.
Yeah, we use it in my school too, so that's kind of exciting. And then I'm guessing that when people go to the website of either the school or the main district, that they can get to where those newsletters are?
Yes, they can, right after the news section of the homepage.
Just because you said website and email were the--
Yes.
I guess so.
And the website is automatically translated into three of our languages. There was one that it just, the translation wasn't quite accurate, but that's something that we can definitely work on as well.
Thank you. It's exciting to see what's exchanged.
I had a question from the Engagement Rubric. For the row where it's discussing empowerment and advocacy, what does leadership training for families entail?
I can pull up the rubric here.
Things have been very fine.
Math example? So the FACE committee does different trainings in different parent, gives opportunities for parents to come in and families to come in, so I believe that that is-- How do you do it, you guys? Can you do it for me, this guy? You have two fingers? Do you need me? I've never done that.
We have students here, can you know?
Yeah.
Or you can just go up to the top. Okay. You, two, go ahead. So they bring in families and do training, different family training along with your students at the same time.
At the bottom.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. And FACE is the family and community engagement.
Yes.
Just wanted to--
Yes, thank you.
And Dr. Bass, not to put you on the spot, but I feel like that's also a part of the work of the RICE committee as well, to empower, you know, parents to be able to speak and act on the issues that are important to them and their scholars.
Okay.
I have a question. Are the leadership trainings something you guys want to implement, or are they already implemented? The particular one that Gotham mentioned about trainings for families, diversity of schools, or like their own communities, maybe those are trained on facilitation.
So I think those are different labels going underneath--
Oh, I see, I see.
Yeah, going underneath, they're just different examples of the empowering and advocacy piece that rise in FACE and the family engagement community.
Okay, so they're doing that or--
They are doing that currently.
Oh, mm-hmm.
And they're going to, they continue to, they're continuing to--
Yeah.
What other questions might there be?
Well, I guess I'm wondering, from student perspective, how are, how is the communication that you're receiving? It says that the announcements are staff to families per student. So are your parents, do you feel like your parents are, or are you hearing from people that they're receiving the communication or they're using it as far as the Talking Points? Like, do you have any--
Yeah, I can add to that. Me personally, my mom is a teacher in the district, so she's more familiar with how to work with those type of things. So she's very updated on that, like checking student view for all my siblings and I. But I am aware that I do have friends in my classes and many students, honestly, in the school. Their parents don't utilize that. Their parents either just don't take the time to do it, or simply just don't know how to do it. And also, I know we talked a lot about language barriers. Obviously, Park Center, there, it's a very diverse school with a very diverse room of languages, so I think that's another barrier. For example, my friend, her parents speak Swahili, so when they receive these messages in English, they probably don't even take the time to look at them because they're not even going to understand them. So I think, I know you mentioned that right now, they're being translated to the top three most current languages.
Which are not being translated.
Yeah, which most likely is not Swahili. And from a Park Center perspective, the top three languages that they're being translated to, which I can assume is probably Spanish, Mone, and Vietnamese, that only maybe represents a portion of Park Center and not much, I mean, obviously, a greater half of Park Center, but there's still that other half where, again, like my friend, her parents don't even bother to take the time to read it because they don't understand it. Or also, they just, there's just parents also at the same time that don't take the time to read it because maybe they don't think it's important, or they maybe just don't think it's relevant to their life. I know that's kind of bad, I'm sorry, but that's at least what I got from at Park Center and from what I gained from other students. But I know, like, for parents like my mom, she does appreciate it, she utilizes it. She has other colleagues who are students in the district, and they utilize it. So there is a good number of people at Park Center who do use it, but then also there's the other.
Thank you.
I have a question now on top of that, because I'm very curious. For, at our sites, like, so for the example, at Park Center, do we have translators, like, at conferences, that might be showing parents how to utilize ParentView or how to look for certain things in an email that might, might not be translated, but they would recognize it and then know to go to ParentView, and they've been able to have some translation services in advance so that they can go into ParentView and understand the information?
Yeah. So from what I'm aware of, we have Vietnamese, Mone, Spanish interpreters, and then some languages native to Africa, I'm not for sure, so I don't want to say we are incorrect, something incorrect, but we do have those interpreters and translators, they are present at conferences as well to help families. And I know that there is, at least from what I've seen going to conferences, there is always a large amount of the Hispanic community there, so obviously, our Spanish interpreter is being utilized a lot, same with the Mone community. So they obviously are able to help parents and students and whoever needs assistance with that, which I think is great as well. However, same thing, if those parents don't come to conferences or if they just don't have the time or don't, you know, they don't understand the email, they don't think it's relevant, then they're just not able to have access to seeking those translators because maybe they just don't know about it or they just don't have the time or, again, if they don't understand it, that's kind of out of their control, so, yeah.
Our, to your, to your question about how we get families who may have other languages as their, other than English as their predominant language, our multilingual learning team has annual family, MLL family nights, where they're trying to get families connected to all of that support that we have across the district for language support. And it's a, it's a hugely attended event, and we do that every fall, there's a fall, winter, and spring each year to help, to help with that and making sure that families are getting connected to the language services that they need.
It's almost like an orientation for families in all of our programs and services. And they do an excellent job of that.
Okay, any other final questions before we move to the next agenda item?
I didn't have a question, but I kind of wanted to come right perspective out there. So in my household, my mom has two, me, my brother, and growing up with communications with teachers, it wasn't, like she doesn't really check like student view, like she does, she doesn't track our progress like that. Most of the time when there's like a situation at school or that needs to be communicated to my mom, she only really recognizes it if it's, I guess, bad, you know, so like, I don't really know if like it's out there, but I think also, when we're talking about communication, I don't think we should just be communicating like the bad things, I think we should also be communicating the breakthroughs that students are making, and I think from my experience, most of the communication to home is negative, and that can kind of, depending on your household too, that's not really a good thing to have if you don't have a good home, whole life, you know? And, so yeah, that was kind of, okay.
No, thank you so much for adding that, that's a really good point, and I think we've had some conversation in the past before about exactly that need, that we need to be reinforcing the great things that students are doing with families, that it shouldn't, yeah, I recognize that, and is there anything that staff might add to that or how we've thought about that or been working on that?
We do, I mean, thank you Izzy, because that is really, really important, and we do absolutely ask teachers to make as, more often than not, good news phone calls, and they'll even say that families are often taken aback by that, so that just says exactly what you're saying Izzy, is they're not used to that. And so we're really trying to push that, and I, we need to continue to push it harder and harder because, you know, we don't want families to even get to the point where they think, oh, this is another bad phone call, so I'm not even going to answer, right? And just get deflated about their school experience when there's good things that happen every day for all of our students, so, yeah, we'll, it's a good reminder to talk about that with principals again.
I do think, I was thinking the same thing that Izzy mentioned, just as a parent, the messages are so much more noticeable when it's something bad, that's specific to like one of my students, so. The good things tend to be like sent out to all.
Yes.
Families, which isn't as noticeable for me because there's so much of that coming in every day.
But it's not personal.
Yeah, so, yeah, even just those one-off, you know, something good that's happening, I think would be appreciated by families.
Thank you, that's a good reminder, that's a good reminder.
That, oh, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, from personal experience, actually, I take a phone call home once and my child was on the other line, and I was like, oh my gosh, what happened? And she's like, I did really good, so I got to. Ms. Ness had like a special telephone in her office, like it was like Mickey Mouse or something? Anyway, that's beside the point, but I do think that leads to what Mina was saying as well, which is that sometimes I think our parents get overwhelmed by the amount of communication that is being sent out, not just the language barrier, but even as a native English speaker, I can't tell you how many times I'm like, no, that's too much, like, you know, you get like fifty emails from the Career Resource Center like a day, you know? So I think, you know, from my perspective, maybe it's not as much at the elementary level, I don't remember anymore, but at the high school level, the communication is really almost excessive, but it's all valuable information. And so I think as a parent, and I hear this from a lot of parents, they don't want to read it, they don't want to look at it, they don't, like, they only want, which I think is why the website gets utilized, because they can go to what it is that they're looking for rather than through all these emails. So I, I wonder if there's a way that we can, I don't know, alter the way that we distribute communication and its like level of like, important, not importance, because it's all important, but like what the type of content is. Like this is important content that you need to know about what's happening in your child's school this week, and this is what you need to know about graduation, more like, in, I don't know, in a different way or like condense it somehow, so it's like, like the SMORE thing, I really liked that where you get like all the sheets all at once for all the things you could, could sign up for instead of like an individual, like basketball sign up, softball sign up, like all the different individuals. But I don't know if that's really possible.
Well, I know the SMORE is such a big hit with many of the principals, they love it because of the translation, but they get to see where people view it, and it's, and it's pretty cool, but I'm wondering too, Kay, is that part of your plan in meeting with the school principal I'm talking about?
That's some good feedback.
Because it's just not, you know, the demands and the expectations are all kind of shifting around, and so I think that's kind of the exciting thing that I know Kay and I have talked about, how do we sort of better position the schools to be more active and thoughtful in what they do?
Yeah, so I mean, next step would be to, and we've shared some thus far, but really focus on those best practices, right? Like just as a whole, in the world right now, right, everybody's inundated with so many things and more than they ever have been, right? So I'm of the mindset that less is more, and we need to get, even just even internally with, with emails, like we, like newsletters, you know, no more than ten items in there, right? Really short and sweet, make them bullet, you know, make it easy to read, right? Bullet point things. So that will be our next step, but yeah, I agree, you know, as a, as a parent myself, like it's overwhelming the amount of information that you're getting, and I completely agree. So definitely something that we're gonna continue to tend to.
So kind of going back just a little bit, but when Mina was talking, she was mentioning a translator at her school, and to my knowledge at least, my school does not have a translator, so if people were, who do not speak English, because I'm pretty sure most of the teachers and staff, they only speak English, and we also don't have like extra career like Spanish classes or other language classes, so we don't have a teacher to aid students' families, so I think making sure also that we give resources like a translator or opportunities for families like that to smaller schools, not just bigger schools. Of course, that's like a, like a difficult thing to figure out with like staffing and things like that, but I think that's a really good resource to have for families when they come to conferences because more people want to come, and I'm pretty sure at my school, not a lot of families do come to conferences and it's pretty small term, so.
Keep that.
Just a little, my principal canceled the staff meeting last week and told us all to call five families and with a positive, then, so, just a little bug in some people's ears about when you're talking about staff meetings. Maybe they can be used a little differently.
Can we add the positive communication to our culture work as a, just as a notation, because I know as we think about creating, all of our work to create positive school cultures, I think that's something we might want to retain for note in that work.
Okay, awesome, great conversation. Izzy, thank you for, you started all that, all of that conversation, thank you. All right, should we move on to the next agenda item? Okay.
Really appreciate students joining us for the vision card for strategic direction, so you really appreciate. On a, on a busy school night, I'm sure, so, thank you so much. Grab a, grab a sandwich on your way out if you didn't have a chance to get one yet.
Okay, you got it, okay. Sure, there's more.
Okay, have a great night. See ya. Just give a moment here for our next presenters to queue up their technology, and they will introduce our presenters and our special guest for this evening. So our next presentation is entitled Strategies to Recruit and Retain a Diverse Workforce. Joining us this evening, evening from the Human Resources Department are HR Director Boo Muwa and Susan Hang, our Recruitment and Retention Manager. Also with us this evening is Marcus Flynn, who is the Executive Director of Black Men Teach, who will be presenting towards the second half of the presentation. So without further ado, we'll hand it over to Boo and Susan, thank you.
Well, good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. I, Susan, the Recruitment and Retention Manager here, with my director here. Thank you for the space and the opportunity to share our district's recruitment and retention efforts that we have been executing, implementing, and enhancing. Just quickly here, one of our strategies, actually, our strategy, our ongoing strategy to recruit and maintain a diverse workforce is through embedding recruitment retention at a system-wide level, also including, which is collaborating with our internal and external partners, so it's a very collective approach to the recruitment retention, particularly now in the time of not only just creating a diverse workforce, but also a very competitive and a workforce that's limited workforce. And so we'll be covering, just highlighting some of our recruitment efforts and retention efforts. I say some because there are still many other activities or items that have happened at a school district, whether that be a site level, positions, and so we'll cover some of the highlights. But I think some of the key highlights that we'll be covering are those key components that really do talk to the system-wide approach and our collaboration, strong collaboration with our internal. So recruitment efforts, what does that mean and how does that look like? So it's really looking at how are we growing the workforce, how are we actively seeking the workforce, our talent, how are we hiring, recruiting, how are we attracting the workforce to OSEU, OSEU as an employer of choice? And so some of the items I'll be highlighting really speaks to growing, diversifying, recruiting, and actively seeking. So some of the highlights, I want to start with our Grow Your Own OSEU Pathways Program. I have another slide, I'll talk more about what does that mean, what is that umbrella of OSEU area schools pathways program. But this piece really speaks to how are we growing, how are we tapping into talents, untapped talent, how are we training, how are we preparing our upcoming workforce to be able to meet those workforce needs, our teachings, our, our teaching staff need, our work, workforce overall, in a short-term and long-term goals. We also have, we continue to work with our College and Career Readiness Program, our sites and our programs in terms around recruiting events, and so this is an approach that we have done, continue to do, and actively each year enhance and increase the amount of our presence in the space of our schools. So whether that be the open houses right before school starts, going into the classroom, being on the career panel, you know, being at the Brooklyn Middle School Career Day, talking about education, like how did I get to where I'm at? Being, the sites relying, also partnering with the sites to let us know, what are some good times to come out, what are some activities that we can tap into, and how can we partner? We mean HR or other, our other recruiters or champions across the district. We also have higher ed and community, our higher ed and our community partnerships, very key in how do we tap into our diverse population, help recruit and train. I can't speak to all of the higher ed, but I just, I mentioned a few that we close, work closely with, so Metro State, universities, North Hennebun, St. Cloud. So whether that be sharing different, their student teachers or their candidates that's part of their program, going to their job fair or having them in our space to talk all those opportunities to grow in the education field, or with their degrees, or partnering to be, partnering to get those letter of support when we're going after those grants, right? So it's really that collaborative approach for that. PBD partnership as well, we partner with a lot of community partnerships, including, for example, Broke League Program, our UCL program. We also have our Career Force Center, we work with the Veterans Rep there, and so how do we tap into some of these untapped talent or talented talent? And then also other partnership, partnership, for example, our Black Men Teach, I'll hand the, the, turn it over to Marcus to talk on for about that. So those are just some of our collaborative efforts that we work in terms of recruiting and seeking talent. So this Grow Your Own, it's this visual of this umbrella, and so what is this umbrella? It's our OSEU, our, our G O, G Y O O, trying to brand that, a visual of different pathways that our students or non-licensed or tier one, tier two staff can tap into as they are going to, going to a teacher prep program or come their journey, their approach to becoming a fully licensed teacher with OSEU. We have the different buckets, so there's different pathways that individual can tap into, it's expanded over this, well, this year has really expanded with the grants that we've got from MDE, so we're very excited about that. The dark blue bucket talks, speaks to our Grow Your Own Adults Program, and MDE their grant is, is to diversify the education workforce, and that aligns with our vision and goals as well. So our, our pathways there are for our BIPOC staff, non-licensed staff, who are going to the teacher prep program, getting financial scholarships, of course, stipend, PD mentorship. Same goes with our yellow bucket, which are our staff who are interested in going into special education. We have our, our green bucket pathways, which is one that we have existing, which is our MOU to support staff who are, who have access to the MOU for students to teach at Grappler Co., so when they're at that stage, they also have the major support, there's a number of lists up for at MOU, so I won't go into details. And then that high, that blue one at the end there taps into our secondary students. So currently, right now, we have a partnership with Park Center, and they have an education course where students can explore- course where students can explore, create awareness of teaching, education workforce, or education field, and also get concurrent college credits. They'll pay paid internship, summer internship. We have partnership with across other, many of our departments here at the district to provide those internship, PD, training, and then of course introduction to education. That's something that's for, and it's really to also diversify the education workforce, create that awareness. And I'll touch on some of the other additional recruitment efforts. Some of the recruitment efforts are also, and retention efforts that I'll cover, really it plays a gray line between recruitment and retention. So there's a lot of recruiting and retention. But we also have an optional MOU that's in partnership with the union for alternative mandatory probation. So these are for our BIPOC staff who are tier-one, tier-two. It may be a little more additional probation or extension that we've experienced to enhance their skills, their learning. So there's an opportunity for folks to tap into that as well. That kind of ties into with our next bullet point, and then that simple point where extending probation for teachers who may need more time. And so giving us opportunity for folks to also expand and have a little more time to grow in the areas and how can the district support that. Keep going back to partnership with building. So we have those career panels, job community events, so not necessarily just being at the site to talk to our community, who's ever, who's, whoever already has kind of a connection with the Ossio, so family, friends, but also bring our staff, whether that be our admin, our coordinators, our teachers, into the space of the employer panel, into the space of our career fairs, our community partners, and letting them folks know, having folks speak about their journey and how they became, where they're at in the education field. So really having that strong partnership, that's been something that's been amazing across the district that we work with. Not necessarily just our, the staff, but also our partners. So we work closely also with our union groups to have that support to say, hey, Ossio Area School is an employer, and hopefully it's your employer of choice. And I highlight the last piece here, which is employer of choice. I keep talking about that, and it's about having that narrative out there that Ossio Area School, yes, we're a school district, we provide, we support our scholars, scholars in community, but we're also employer. And we employ teachers, non-licensed, and all types of careers where folks can grow here. And how do we do that? We do it with what we have been doing, going out there, talking about it, but also hosting our own career fair. So we hosted, the last three years, we hosted our own career fairs, expanding more information within our own career fair. So for example, this year, first three career fair, we added a component of information where we have session for different departments to come talk and say, why choose Ossio? What are some of the services, what are some support systems that we can provide you as a staff here? Social media is also another platform that we continue to grow, my team, HR. We utilize that space, that social media space, to share, recognize our employees, our communication. We have a very strong partnership with the communication team to share, not only about jobs or what we're hiring, but also the workplace culture. We have, when communications share about recognition week, a teacher, a nurse, we also share that on that platform, so that there's also a lens of careers and how to explore. I'm going to transition to, over to the retention efforts. So retention, how are we retaining, we're bringing folks in, how are we retaining our workforce, our diverse workforce, retaining those diverse and qualified staff? Well, here are some of our efforts, again, very district-wide and in a collaboration with a lot of our partners. Mentorship is one of our aspects in supporting new staff to the district, but also, it also provides leadership opportunity for our current staff. And so we have our mentor mentorship. I'm going to just briefly just talk about in terms of what the efforts are for the mentorship program. But it's really having our new staff having a connection, having resources with someone who is a tenured teacher, or a staff who can support them as they go on their journey, starting here at the district. We have our TTE Teachers of Color Mentorship Program, our new teacher mentorship program. Knowing that this is also very critical in retaining our staff and also growing your staff, we have aggressively sought out grants that support this, that aligns with this. And so we're excited that we will have two FTE next year to support the new teacher mentorship program, special education mentorship, and our ESP mentorship program. We also have partnership and resources with our Department of Educational Equity, with our PDD groups. These are also things that I talk to when I go out to talk to folks, and people ask me, how, why, why Ossio? Or talking points I also provide for my team who go out and to speak to by Ossio, or how can we continue to use the program? Our new teacher workshop week, and our Just-in-Time Training, along with our new ESP onboarding training with our ESP liaisons, and schools, and the Just-in-Time Training. And so really what that does is capturing our new staff to be able to have the resources, the support that they can do to best have their job, and, pardon, so see your some of the recruitment efforts that we are doing here, but we continue to enhance and be creative with. So thank you all so much. Also, if there's any questions, and then I'll hand it over to Marcus to talk about.
Questions? Comments?
I just want to thank you for all your efforts in diversifying, all the efforts to approach us. And I'm really excited to see how the Park Center program grows.
I'm curious, did we see any uptick in our recruiting effort after our recognition for being top place to work? Did that help us at all yet?
We are not allowed to advertise that unless we pay for it.
Oh, okay.
So, we decided, we decided to comply with the regulations, so it was over ten, it was ten to twenty thousand dollars if we wanted to brand that as a part of Ossio.
That's how they get you, huh?
Of course it is, what the heck? I guess what I'd be wondering, though, is for other employers who have received that recognition and paid for, like, is there a statistical benefit to it?
I don't know.
I'm sure if yes, then.
You know, well, I wouldn't ask the people who make you pay for it, I'd ask people the benefit from it. But, you know, I mean, that, I feel like that's something that, you know, when we're thinking about ways that we support those efforts as a board, twenty thousand dollars towards something that might have a significant impact, I feel like as a board member, I would be willing to support something like that. But I would want to know the data on whether or not it's actually a useful tool to us before spending money on something that might only give us one more person, but... I did want to say too, I really appreciate the aggressive approach for getting grants and additional support. That, I know grant writing is a whole full-time job by itself, so I really appreciate that effort to continue our efforts towards recruitment and retention, so thank you.
I have one more question. So as you look at the different MDE initiatives or flexibility regarding licensure, are we seeing improvement in that? I know it's a reoccurring legislative platform item, and the reason why I'm asking is, for my job, I recently had the opportunity to look at some candidates that didn't have the educational background requirements, but had experiences that could mirror the skills for the job you're hiring for. And so based on that, we were able to bring some people in. And it was very different when it comes to licensing and so forth, but are we seeing some improvement or some increased innovation?
So the spaces that I've been in, around MDE, or just district, I know there's been conversation about from a petition model?
Yeah.
So I have, I'm not aware of any, or anything like that that's moving, yeah, that I'm aware of. But those are conversations I know there's continuously to have, in terms of license shared.
I haven't heard either in terms of really being strategic with MDE and really utilizing the grants, and tapping into like such as our paraprofessionals, or ESPs, or those that have an AA or working towards an AA in an undergrad. I haven't seen any grants out there that specify for those particular individuals. I think that would certainly open up additional gateways for us to explore different opportunities with them. We are working with, I know that Susan mentioned about Metro, and they do have programs, and even at the, some other partnerships that we are in conversations with, meeting our staff where they're at. Now, it could be a program of between one, two, three years, depending on their credits. And I think our Grow Your Own grants that we just received for the next five years with MDE will certainly tailor to that, for individual staff.
So, yeah, I just, I want to understand a little bit more, so, so for example, if we wanted to create a pool of resources to say that we target to support like five paraprofessionals each year for, for education and moving into their licensure, we can, can we only do it through the grants, or can we create our own, or that become a contract issue?
I can say we can tap into a grant right now. So let's say we have a cohort, a lot of university won't entertain a cohort of less than time.
Okay.
Right, for financial stability for them. So if, let's say we partner with a neighboring school district, and we have a cohort of five, and they have a cohort of five, that could be a conversation that we can certainly explore. But again, then you're talking about in terms of the different pathways, how long is it going to take Boo versus Susan versus Marcus to complete a program? And at what terms and conditions are we going to allow ourselves? The stipend that we receive will certainly expand that, because we have money to give to our staff right now, that's just waiting to pull for us to just hand it out, based on that criteria, right? So based on that, absolutely, we can certainly explore that. The other condition is that they have to be a regular full-time staff, so not like a sub, right? And so, and then they also have to give back services. So there are certain criterias. I'm not one right now to say no. I'm one to say, let's explore, and let's have conversations, and we can, I can always massage things to make it happen.
Yeah, I mean, because once, if we got something really started, and then it's yielding, you know, and now, then it's not a wait, right? It's yielding every year X number of people. Just, I was just a curiosity, so, something we could talk more about.
Absolutely.
Tonya, maybe a couple other things that folks might not be fully aware of. So like on the community side, we're dealing with a lot of part-time staff, hourly casual staff, and, you know, our nation's had record low unemployment rates in the last few years, you know, including here in Minnesota. So it's very aggressive, and the salaries are very aggressive for part-time workers throughout the system. But we, we've done some efforts on our side with a recruiter, and we're thrilled that we're going to be hiring our own talent acquisition specialists with HR, starting in July 1st. But even some, even some like behavior changes that have happened for people on my team, specifically the Kid Stop team. So when we would have openings, for example, in Kid Stop in the past, we would say, we're going to do interviews for Kid Stop staff, they're going to be on Tuesday, you know, from one o'clock till five o'clock. Well, that's been completely blown out of the water now. So the acquisition group that we're working with, they have access to online program managers' Outlook calendars, and so when someone calls and shows interest in working for us, instead of having to wait till the date that we designate for interviews, that person gets plugged into Brian's Outlook at Tuesday, or tomorrow at 8:00 AM, all of a sudden I have an appointment, and I'm interviewing someone. Because if you wait till Friday, they're going to take a job over here at Amazon for twenty-eight bucks an hour. And that's just been our experience, right? So there's, so that has happened in the last year, year and a half, and you know, we started this year with like fifty-two open positions at Kid Stop, and we're around eleven or ten right now we've been staying at, so that's been helping, we've been retaining them. So I just think there's some, I'm not in HR, but I'm just explaining kind of some of the behavior things that we've had to change to try to recruit staff. And then we're super thrilled with some dollars that have been made available. We just entered our, I think last week was our first week of some longevity retention pay for people who work in Kid Stop. I can't tell you the exact parameters of how that works, but it's based on if you stay with us for over a three-month period, you get some additional pay based on the number of hours you average on a weekly basis for every three months that you stick with us. The staff are thrilled about that. So I know not everything is pay, but we've gotten a lot of feedback from our team that this is appreciated, that we're, we still don't compete with Amazon. We, we still don't compete with some of the coffee shops in my neighborhood that are paying twenty-seven bucks an hour for people to be baristas, right? But we're doing some things that, your impact with kids, flexibility of hours, and then now there's some of this retention pay. So this last year and a half has been like a, what's that, uphill learning curve for me on, on this kind of new situation with hourly and casual staff. But I wanted to make sure the board knew kind of a couple of behavior things and how, that we've implemented in the last year in partnership, of course, with HR. And I think we've learned a lot, and I think when we add this talent acquisition specialist, I can't speak for the HR team, but our, our belief is it's going to go well, and we're hoping that it's, potentially could be something that might also have additional staff in that area. Because this whole, I think it goes without saying, when you retain staff and they end up becoming good employees, that's worth the investment, first of all, the time that it takes to recruit people, right? So that's just kind of my, I just wanted to put out in the space my perspective on how it's kind of been working for us on the recruitment and retaining, retaining side for part-time employees.
Brian, what coffee shop is that?
I was doing that for two thousand seconds, summer job.
It's right by the MIA. I'll meet you there at eight, I like Moca's time.
No, but if I may also share one thing too about Grow Your Own with the student, the scholar, when Susan mentioned about internal partnerships, it's truly a system-wide for every single department and every single site to be an ambassador of recruitment and retention. We can't do it alone, it doesn't sit within HR. We lead it, but we have to have partnerships, and relationship is key here. And so I want to also highlight, because Susan really touched base on just a glimpse of what, some of the drawings that happens in my office there, and it's scribbling, but it turns out to be something beautiful with our staff and our students, is truly partnering up with Brian's team and the Kid Stop. And so when we're talking about a year-round internship, that's really what we're looking at in terms of phases with our Grow Your Own grants, and, and also paying them throughout the summer so that they are also being paid and have a one-day workshop that's geared towards whether or not they're working towards teachers, or they're working towards an ESP, what does that look like? So hopefully we can mirror this to be something much more critical in Ossio, and not just a focus on education, but career-wise as well. Because this is a business operation, we really look at it from that, from that angle. So we thank you for your time and for the platform.
And just one more thing, I think Brian sort of hit on, at least part of what I was thinking about as you were going through the presentation. Just given that so many districts are focused on recruiting staff of color, I think incorporating some of those competitive tactics into how we recruit teachers and ESPs, I think is also something that we need to continue to explore. And I know some of that's already happened, but I'm just thinking about, you know, how we can get, you know, teachers locked down faster than other districts, or, you know, start to build those relationships sooner, so that they come here versus somewhere else. So just, that was one thing. And then second, I think what keeps coming through my mind is, I've been aware of this Grow Your Own Ossio program for a while, but what keeps coming to mind for me is, like, how do we know that it's working? What are the metrics? How many students are going through the programs? How many staff are successfully completing the programs? You know, even looking at some of the others that you mentioned, the extended probation for teachers, which I love, but how do we know that that's successful? And do we need to expand that further? You know, so I think those are some of the questions that I have, I think for the next time you come to us. And I know that, I don't know if you're both doing a presentation to RISE soon, but I know they're supposed to get a similar presentation soon, so looking forward to that.
I, I, I'll be attending the RISE next week.
Add to what Thomas is saying is, not, not
Just to add to what Thomas is saying is not, not just like what is it working? But what pathways are participants gravitating towards? What's getting more participation and, I guess, return on investment for us? Like, a little, just like a little bit deeper, I guess, like into that? And if there's a particular pathway that is a standout or something that we should be focusing on?
Well, and I also recognize that we're talking about, we're talking about numbers that in some cases could be small.
Yeah.
You know, we might have to make very incremental progress, you know, with some of our, you know, diversity recruitment efforts. So I don't want to get too caught up in like where the big numbers are, but I just want to make sure that we do have metrics and that we are making progress toward.
I guess I was actually thinking about it reverse, like, are there any pathways that aren't being utilized? Versus, you know, because I know that the participants aren't great enough to say, you know, but anyways.
Like, are we promoting it or not using it?
Yeah, yeah. That's kind of what I'm thinking about, is like, do we have anything that's just not being utilized?
There are a few opportunities that with us two plus your, the three of us can't do it alone in that amount of short time. But know that there are potential opportunities for a few of our high schools for us to tap into and mirror this educational Grow Your Own in other areas to really help and elevate that, that seamless pathways that we recruit on. I'll just say and put it there. And then please feel free to reach out to Susan or myself directly if you have questions, but those questions are noted. And how would you recommend that we respond back to? Be it email to the board or to you, Thomas, directly and Heather or?
Yeah, usually, usually our follow-ups. We work Dr. Heil and it gets organized and sent out to the rest of us.
We'll do that then.
Thank you.
And I would also, I'm just going to echo onto what Boo said because we're, we're working on this new position with community engagement. We see that happening in multiple areas like custodial, food service with all of our ESP's facilities. And so right now, a three-person team can only do so much. But if we can get the value-add that we think we're going to get with Brian's position and can purchase some more talent acquisition specialists to really, then you, then you can respond immediately. Because then you've got mass people to do that work instead of just two or three. So we do have a nirvana, if you're asking.
I was just going to add too, like anecdotally, what Brian's talking about is, I know a number of people who've changed jobs recently and they start applying on Friday and by Monday they've got four or five job offers, so.
Is that response?
Yeah, it is. I think that, that what you were talking about is really a critical new behavior development.
Yeah, and the ability to apply with your phone while you're sitting on your couch, you know? So even that's something we've learned, like how our own application systems work or don't work well. Remember that rapid response? And I know, you know, and then just one other thing. So I know we're talking, I'm talking about recruitment and stuff. But then for us, you know, we started the school year with over 500 students on a waitlist to participate in Kid Stop, right? And now it's down to about 150. Now, our goal is zero, right? But that's 350 kids who are participating on a weekly basis in a positive program in our community that weren't being served before these efforts took place, right? So there's, it, there's, sometimes we forget to highlight, like, here's the long-term benefit. Or as we recruit quality special ed ESPs, here's kids who might need additional services who are getting those services that we might've had to been scrambling before, before. So like for me, that's how I, there is an end to this that benefits both students that we serve and the community that we serve. So sometimes, well, that keeps me going because it can be frustrating to be in these staffing scarcity, right? It's, it's very difficult, it's, it's not fun, that's for sure.
Echo it at the, at the school level.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Great conversation, sorry.
All right, we'll transition to Marcus, so black men teach.
How are y'all doing today?
Good, welcome.
So while she's pulling that up, I'll, I'll start with like some just baseline context of things important for us to all kind of come to the conversation the same way. So there's two studies I think are a lot often. One, 2017, John Hopkins study says if you have a black teacher by third grade, 13% more likely to go to college, right? You had a second one in that same timeframe, that 13 goes all the way up to 32%, right? There's another studies looking at, I think, almost 600,000 students on the East Coast, North Carolina. They looked at, if you have a black teacher in between third and fifth grade in his life suit, right? So we're looking upper elementary, thank you. 29% more likely to aspire to college if you're a low-income black boy or free to reduce to like kindergarten or eighth grade. By the data standpoint, one of the toughest groups to reach, 39% more likely to drop out of high school, right? And so I share that because the impact to me is large. And anecdotally, as long as I've experienced, I used to be a classroom teacher myself. But when I look at the data, the data to me, and I, I didn't, so my background is in epidemiology, right? So I think just naturally I'm a numbers person. When I look at the data objectively and I think about academic outcomes for black students, there's nothing more important, there's no policy, program, professional development, after-school program intervention that's more impactful than black teachers. And these studies don't say that they have XYZ professional development, they have this training, they have this. Often it's the uniform policy that brings to classrooms, so this is the context I kind of bring. I think the other part of the context is the Minnesota piece. So I don't know the numbers as well today. I memorized the numbers from 2019. There's 62,436 teachers teaching in 2019. There are not that many teachers leading classrooms right now. At the time, they were 1.4% black, that's 875 teachers. They don't stratify by race and gender, so if you take the number of the proportion of men to women, apply that to 875, we're looking at about 220 black teachers, black male teachers, sorry. So that's less than half of 1% of all of the teachers. You think about specifically the elementary schools, going back to the data I shared, also to the work of our organization, a conservative estimate would leave you with about 50. I actually went to Pelzman, I requested the data because I was tired of conservative estimates. They told me the number in 2023 was 35 black men teaching in elementary school classrooms. So you think about 35 black men, elementary school teachers that could easily be in this room and you would not even feel cramped, right? That's the context that we operate in across the state. And so our organization, our mission is to recruit, prepare, place, and retain black male teachers. What I'm talking about though, this is the effort that we're looking to standard up right now. So it all revolves around this idea of collective impact, which is effectively a nonprofit's approach to systemic change using a vehicle of coalition building. Coalition building is a specific strategy that has five core tenets on the screen, it's a common agenda. We're co-creating a North Star to align to. Share measure, we've got pieces intuitive, mutually reinforcing activities. There's, I think in the education and the nonprofit space, you'll go district to district, you go organization to organization, you see there's a lot of similar activities. And I think the fortunate thing is, if you look at the landscape, all of the answers that are requisite for solving the problem are present. The problem is often it's people and organizations working in silos. And I think we demonstrate it over time, it's been an inefficient approach. So mutually reinforcing activities is thinking about how do we amplify efforts and not duplicate? Communication piece, gain intuitive, and then the backbone is really who's the convener of the coalition helping fill the gaps. That's black men teach. So text is small, so we just want to give a kind of a quick overview of like, what have we done in this coalition space today? So it started back July of 2024. And we basically started strategizing. And when we built these strategy sessions, we took a cross-section of the ecosystem, look at it like top-down. We say, what's a representative sample of anyone who has a direct or indirect influence on a black man who decides they want to become a classroom teacher? So we're divisions a lot of people, right? So we had government agencies, we had people from OHE, MDE, Helsby, had higher ed leadership, university presidents down to professors. District leadership, so we had multiple superintendents, associate superintendents, HR directors. We had building leaders, of course, principals, APs. We had community organization leaders, other executive directors of nonprofits, policy advocacy folk, then black male educators, all in our rooms. We talked about 50-ish day holders, all coming together to just do two things, look at data and ide. From there, we took the data, or we took the ideas and we started to refine and filter through additional conversations, through focus groups, all of those things. Came up with a set of strategies we felt was comprehensive enough to move the needle at a significantly larger level than our organization's currently operating. The result of the meeting was basically this, right? It's the scope of the coalition was the first step. And so the coalition said, we want the work of the coalition resulted in three things. Increased academic outcomes for students, more firmly learning environment for students, and then school environments where black men thrive. And that thrive piece is defined by three indicators as well. The primary population, we said that this work is going to concentrate on are schools that have a black student population that's 40% minimum, right, 40% or greater. Then the primary indicator is that we want to track, to measure the success of the work of the coalition. First, we want to get 20% of the teacher staff in each of those schools to be black men, so those are the critical mass. And a 20% threshold of black male elementary school teachers at a elementary school in Minnesota does not exist unless you partner with black men to teach. And so the goal is to do that by 2023, or 2034, 35, not 2025, I'm going to reorganize. The academic outcome piece, trying to develop a composite metric that looks more than just proficiency or even just growth, some survey measures as well. Measure students' perception of joy and belonging, it gets that affirming learning environment piece. And then the thrive piece for black men is looking at their perception of belonging. Is that school environment affirmative to them? Financial security and support for health and wellness, those three things are most of the value. Quick numbers, there's 96 elementary schools, we found, that meet that 40% or more threshold. There's 49 black male teachers in those schools. I told you 35 remember earlier, some of these schools are K-8, K-12, so they're counting black men who are not in elementary. But to get those schools to 20% of their teacher staff, they need to be at 433, so that means you need an additional 384 black male teachers. 433 black male teachers teaching elementary, that's more black men than are teaching K-12 today. That's roughly a thousand percent increase of the number of black men teaching those specific school types. But I think with those school types, that number of black men, you're talking about, about 50% of all black elementary school students across the state of Minnesota have access to a black male teacher. Many of them have more access to more than one. Here's an idea of where those schools are. Now, this is nowhere near geographically accurate, because I drove to Oseo and it was not that far south, what I far left. But the point of this is, these are the traditional school districts that hold the most schools. So you see, we have St. Paul, unsurprisingly have the most, 14 and 10, Oseo, we'd said that there's four. Of course, your data may be a little different. And then charter schools that are at the bottom, like the bottom right corner is in green, it's 49 charter schools that meet that threshold. And so that's like how the 96 schools are distributed across. Those are the schools that we're looking to partner with over the course of this tenure period. 10 districts where natural charter schools, I'll just agree on yourself. So the strategy piece that we talked about, right? The outcome of those strategy meetings, there's 10 strategies. They're divided between the high school, college, non-traditional teacher prep, professional level. The high school level is three things, very similar to what you all presented earlier, right? Concurrent enrollment or the career pathway programs focused on education, right? Supporting more men going into those courses. We've done this over the past two years. We worked at Patrick Henry High School and St. Louis Park High School. We started working with Patrick Henry, they had two black men who took the class, the next year they had 17. The year after that they had maybe 22, 23, 24, somewhere in that ballpark. St. Louis Park, I think we have another 18, 19 at that school right now. You serve in internships, so again, it's like you all thinking about, what are the best ways to get, you know, black men decide they want to teach, you know, in front of young kids and pay them to do it, simple. And then leveraging athletic coaches as recruiters, that's how all those strategies work together. Athletic coaches help us recruit to those two areas before. It's the high school level. But I'm moving quick, just to take a time. College level, it's really two things. It's thinking about developing cohort-style partnerships with universities and then thinking about on those universities, how are we finding men who are proximate? We have data that says the average age of black men Minnesota-based deciding to teach is 23. So it just tells you already, that's already past the traditional college students graduation age. It's telling the story of how most of our men are not traditionally coming to the profession for a number of reasons. Many of them are coming to it as either second career or second major. So kind of leaning into that piece. Non-traditional side, two more strategies for the apprenticeship pathway. We're in the process of trying to design an apprenticeship right now. Working alongside Alex Laiusi, he's the former executive director of Helsby. He's working with D's, finds the main concept, first across the state who's building apprenticeships. Then alternative licensure pathway, so not the same as an apprenticeship, this is more post-back. Thinking about a Helsby-approved, post-back program that'll allow you to get a tier-one, tier-two license and then move to your tier-three. And then as a professional level, that's the last four sets of strategies. So we're thinking about school culture support, specifically culturally responsive school culture support. Really leaning on, after you're familiar with the Culture Response of School Leader Institute or Mohammed Khalifa, who used to be at the University of Minnesota, or Katie Plakel, who's currently at the University of Minnesota, they lead that work together. Addressing policy barriers, addressing financial barriers, and then a suite of health and wellness supports, thinking like you really can't pour unless your cup is full enough to pour from. That's the set of strategies. And then here are just like quick overview next steps. On the right side is just the timeline, I probably focus primarily there. April, where we are now, we just actually had, we could go today. We had a kickoff event, brought in community to celebrate the launch of the coalitions of the first formal gathering of the coalition. We moved into something which is designated, but for us, that's really just like finalizing numerical benchmarks. Then we have quarterly cadence and we moved into the end of the first year. In June, we have like an annual gathering of the coalition. And last thing is just like tentative event timelines for the coalition. This is probably the activity pieces that you might see pop up, all the other stuff that happens by the seasons. There's a, coaches and community leaders summit that'll happen in December. We do a high school summit, actually doing a first one now in May, we'll do another one in April, 2025. We're bringing together about 100 black male high school students who are either in concurrent enrollment courses or just in a high school that we're partnering with. Really get them to kind of underscore the why behind the decision to teach. And then that annual gathering of the coalition, I think it'd be a large event, probably about 12 people. So I stay in line, but I do want to open up questions, I don't want to get over the top.
Yeah, questions and comments?
Oh yeah.
Go ahead.
No, you go.
Can I just anecdotally say, we, where I teach, we have two black men teach, teachers in the younger grades, well, one in the younger grade and one in an older grade and a mentor also there. And it feels like to me already that the climate of the school for the students has greatly improved positively. Just from having those two additional young black male teachers. So just a thank you from this pre-K teacher, trying to start them off on the right path. Go ahead, sorry.
Uh, no, you're good. No, so one, I'm a big fan and this has been long overdue for you to pay a visit to the district, so thank you for being here. A few questions, so one, I was curious about any challenges you're facing in just recruitment and talking to black men and trying to get them into the program or just into the profession in general?
Yeah, you know, when I first started, I thought that would be the hardest part. It's not, there's no shortage, like it was like, is there a shortage of black male athletic coaches? Answer's no. So there's not a shortage of black men who are looking to give back to youth in capacity. The question is, why should they teach? And so I think if you have the right, the right message, but more importantly, the right supporting environment is possible. And I mean, black men teach is a young organization, we've been, have, have, they've really been at this for about three years. We've been, we've been really been at this for about three years now. And in that time, we've grown to about seventy, yes, seventies in number of participants in some high school, colleges, and classrooms. And I think I've been thoroughly encouraged by the number of people willing to raise their hand under the right conditions. And so I didn't talk a lot about what our supports look like because I didn't have enough time to get into some of the details. But some of them are really compelling. And I think it's necessitated by one, just where we are in terms of the number of teachers that benefit from the teaching brain. And I mean, I think we all know that it can be a challenge to recruit teachers without compelling incentives. And so.
That was actually going to, kind of one of my questions that you're leading to is the challenge to recruit teachers in general right now is very challenging. And I love all of this. And at the same time, it almost seems like, how do we get there, right? How do we get to that twenty percent? Especially hearing the actual data from Pelsby, right? Like you shared with us, the number is so low of male, black male teachers in schools. And that's the whole state, right? Yeah, that's really, really alarming. And how do we get to twenty percent when we are in such a competitive job market for any type of job right now? Like what is the, what is the sweet spot? That, you know, because like you said, there is no shortage of people who want to give back to their community, who want to work with kids, who are already working with kids in other ways. But how do we create the perfect environment where someone says, you know, this is the path that I want to take? Because you don't just get to be a teacher overnight. You have to go to school, you have to get your licensure, you have to do all that. And, you know, we have our grow your own program that we're working on and different incentives that we're trying to build, but, and programs like this. But how do you create the right conditions for someone to say, yes, I want to do this, I'm going to do this? To get to that twenty percent when everyone's being pulled to the next job that pays the most the fastest, right? And I guess what I'm wondering about is like, what kind of things are you running into in that regard? And what are you looking for in the connections that you're building to create this program?
Yeah, so big question.
No, I'm sorry.
And I realize I actually didn't answer your question at all. So you're kind of forcing me to come back to that of like really addressing what the challenges are. And so I, I think there's, like, it all starts with understanding what are exactly the barriers that exist? And then thinking about how can you mitigate or eliminate as many of them as possible? And I think some of the barriers are just like this pure isolation piece. Well, I think we solve for that by operating in cohorts. Even that twenty percent threshold means that like likely you'll have people in your great team. Like at, there's, you all are probably approaching twenty percent. Do you have four black men that are teaching at North Park?
We have five.
Five, right.
Yeah, so I think we're, we're better than twenty, yeah.
And so some of it is addressing that. A lot of it, especially for the younger guys, is the financial aspect. So we do a lot of work with our young high school students to even understand the early conception that exists in education relative to some comparable professions. But the data will tell you that it's not good, it's particularly for men. And so we address some of that, right? We provide scholarships, with this North Star promise, that piece will go away. But we also provide retention incentives. So we do student loan debt relief support for our men to think about it on the backend, how do we attenuate that? And we also have a partnership with Twin Cities Habitat for Humanity. So now we're helping them think about homeownership, doing fully forgiving interest free down payment assistance. And so we think about like all of these different areas. The health piece, right? Like that's another focus we're really trying to put into our guys and making sure they have access to a lot of different services to make sure that the health and wellness is taken care of. It, it's still not perfect though, right? Like we have had men who were fully committed to teaching get pushed by something else. They were coming with numbers that were just like undeniable given the conditions, right? Like if you are three years away from getting your bachelor's degree to recommend it to teach, but you have a job opportunity from, I forget what it's called, if I said it, you all recognize it. That's paying you like ninety thousand plus. You've got a mortgage, you've got young children. It, it's sometimes it's hard to say, no matter how much you're going to teach, it's hard to say what are some of those things? But I think it's like, we really try to hammer home early with our men, like this isn't a challenge free. This isn't like a magic pill. This isn't something that will go without its own challenge. But we're here along the way, the entire step. Like from the time for some people, your high school, college, into each of your profession, to support you and try to remove as much barriers as possible, emergency funds there. If something comes up, you've got guys battling vacations and car troubles and this and that. And it's just a lot of stuff. Try to be there to support in that process. But I also think too, back to the numbers piece that you mentioned, right? Moving from thirty-five up to four hundred something sounds absolutely insane. But that's why we think about it from the perspective of a coalition. So you think about like all of the people, and I should have kept a slide in that shows like, who are the people committed to be at the table? The like amount of social and political and even financial capital that's there is like infinite. It feels like four, three, three is on the smaller side. Really when you unite all of the different forces that exist in the community. Because really I do believe all of the answers to the problems are here. And we know it's just like, how do we bring them together and work in a concerted effort?
Thank you. Can you, um, sorry.
You're good.
I like to talk at the same time. Can you tell the rest of the board about the support you offer the teachers even when they, after they even have the jobs? Because I know that our teachers meet on a regular basis for that support, yeah?
So some is a few different things. So one, I think our partnership also, like we have five men at North Park. Three of them we've recommended to North Park, but two of them are hired on their own. But we inherit all of the men. And so there's a school that you have, or even our partnership with Oseo. You have black men who are in those schools already. We then bring in, provide access to our supports. So we have instructional coaches probably there relatively often, working with those men who come in on a bi-wheel-toe basis to just help be both a mentor, but then also help you with your practice. We do professional development. Sometimes it's in-house, sometimes it might be a national conference. We do the loan forgiveness support. We have the homeownership piece now. We do the health and wellness piece. I mean, we really try to think about our mentalistically, trying to support as much as possible to sustain them in the profession.
I, you, you sort of already talked about it in the presentation, addressing school culture. And I think, you know, one of the things that I have to grapple with every day just in, you know, my day-to-day work is retention. You know, we are seeing record numbers in terms of the recruitment of just black and BIPOC staff in general across the state. But struggling with retention because of the culture that, you know, many of these employees are walking into. So I think about that as well with such significant goals in terms of increasing black men in our school systems and bringing them into systems that weren't necessarily set up for them or with them at the table. And so I'm just curious about the experience of some of the men that you already have working in the systems today.
So right now we support fourteen teachers in a classroom. And like, we haven't run a long time, so I'll say this, and of course, I said that context first. We've got a hundred percent retention rate so far. I know our men have left education. And the school culture piece is something that's like newer in development. We're kind of going back and forth, trying to figure out the right partnerships. But I think it's important because we have surveyed data from some of our conferences, a larger gathering of the black men. They're saying the two things that are most attractive to the school, most likely that lead to them being retained are leadership and culture, which is not surprising, right? I think that's the data says about most teachers. And so I think that's something that we're keenly aware of. And even when we go about the process of developing a partnership, that's part of the process of us determining, is this or is this not a school that we should work with? And there's a number of schools you've got to turn away, and there's even partnerships you have to take away. Because the answer was like, that, that piece isn't strong enough. But as we're moving into this coalition work, we're a lot more developmental in approach than we were when it was just kind of like honestly we making the decision. Because the context is set, we said, these ninety-six schools are the parameters, like this parameters, we're looking to operate these ninety-six schools. And so we're going to be a lot more developmental and thinking about like how are we bringing people along? How are we introducing them to the supportive of the cultural responsive school leader institute? So that they get access to the institute, but also ongoing coaching to help build that skill set. There's always so much you can do with individuals. I know that'll be a challenge because not everybody will be culturally responsive. Not everybody wants to be. No matter how much coaching you get, you're not going to implement it. You can't coach somebody if you can't have a black program.
Yep. Are there particular things you pay attention to in terms of leaders of the schools and what you're looking for? And how they're positioning themselves so that you're feeling more confident about the placement of your teachers there?
That's a great question. I'm like a year removed from any additional partnerships. And I'm trying to think about like the current suite of partnerships we have right now. Like what are the common threats? It's kind of hard to predict what it is. I think the, the good thing is like, I think most principals have what's represented, right? There's, there's very few where it's like, okay, that's a little yellow flag. To be honest, I think of all the principals we work with, the one who probably embodies it the most is here, is Zane Wood's manager. And so when I think about the work of the coalition, I think about her. Like the goal should be to replicate her as much as possible. So you have a resource in your district. I think if you're trying to work with it.
Well, for me, this is just so impressive because I, I've seen my fair share of corporate presentations, education presentations, and this is such a clear roadmap. Heather, you asked like, how do you make it happen? Like you've laid out exactly how to make it happen. And now it's to your point about the coalition and the execution and the support. So this is really honestly one of the best presentations I've seen on my time on the board of clearly laying out the problem, making it meaningful, having a clear goal and creating a very tangible, crisp roadmap. Sometimes I feel like when we talk about this topic, we get into a lot of philosophical conversation. And, and this is the, how do you solve the problem? How do you make it happen? So this is extremely exciting for me and I'm glad that we're participants. And I hope that we can accelerate the work that we're doing with you. And I hope that there's a lot of other partners you're continuing to bring in. I mean, I, I know the competition from a corporate perspective of we want the same pool of people. But maybe if there's a different way to say, hey, you'd actually be better off helping if you do something different in supporting the teachers, like you talked about, and supporting the program, providing more incentive and support. So it's just got me thinking from a different lens on, as, as a coalition, what can be done to help support this program as well? So I, I'm super excited about this and this is just so good. Thank you for all you're doing.
I appreciate that, so.
Other thoughts? Okay, one last thank you, seriously. Thank you. I mean, it's just so amazing to have our school change. And I, I'm so excited about Zane Wood and the other schools. Thank you for taking this chance and starting this group and coming up with this amazing coalition. It's an honor to be in your presence, honestly.
I appreciate so much.
Devon and Kiana are, I'm like their work mama.
Kiana's a part of the organization too, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Marcus. Really appreciate you being able to be here this evening to share your most recent development work around the coalition and the collective. So as I shared, Prince shared, it is inspiring. And I think part of what I'm thinking about in this moment is, so even if the coalition is seeing a slow integration of black male educators, it may not be that you get to supply and have pathways that are full of students over the next three to four years that are preparing to be licensed. But if, if school systems are growing their own, that they get to benefit from the value add of having these additional supports around health and wellness, around additional professional development, affinity space with other black male educators being a part of the summits that take place. So there's some value add for districts in that you're coming in just to support those black male elementary educators as well. So there's a variety of different ways that, that, that the program can be complementary to grow your own projects across districts. So thank you.
Thank you for saying that too. Last thing, I, I do think like to underscore that point, it's all about supplement, not supplanting. And so we're working alongside districts that aren't looking to replace anything or looking to like push your, where you're on out of the way, like let's work alongside.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And find a pre-K teacher to replace me at ten years.
Are there any other items of business? Okay, then this work session is adjourned at seven forty-six P M.